We got a nineteen thousand dollar pay grant checking.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the February twenty-second legislative session. A couple of announcements. Please silence your cellphones if you have one with you or your alerting devices. If you have to take a call, we ask you to please do it outside. In case there is an emergency, would you please exit the room, make a right-hand turn, and go down the stairs? If that exit is blocked, please turn to the left and another right and then down the stairs, and we thank you for that. If you would now join me in a moment of either silence or prayer or meditation. Thank you. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a presentation this evening, and I would invite Chief to come up, please, as well as Representatives Kalena Van Gelder and Emily Rantz from Women Supporting Women. Oh, I'm sorry, and Erin Colgrove from the Fire Department.
Colgrove.
Colgrove. Sorry, Erin.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're so glad to be here and make this special presentation. As you know, every year, we, the Fire Department, undertakes a fundraising activity during the month of October to show our support for Women Supporting Women and the Breast Cancer Foundation. We're grateful for the opportunity to do so, and it's always a great partnership, and we're grateful for the ladies who have joined us here tonight to make this special presentation. I will turn the time over to them for any comments they have to say, and then we can make the presentation, if that's okay with you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. I did want to say that the Salisbury Fire Department has donated over eleven thousand dollars in five years to Women Supporting Women. We are extremely grateful for their support. It's important to us to keep local supporting local. We are a local breast cancer organization, the only local breast cancer organization here on Delmarva, so it's very important to us that a local organization as a fire department supports us. So we just want to say thank you again so very much for their support. I do want to introduce my brand spanking new executive director, Alena Van Gelder. She just started in January, so I'm going to let her talk a little bit about Women Supporting Women.
Thank you, Emily, and thank you to you all. We are so grateful for donations such as this one from the Fire Department because it really helps us continue our mission of providing free services to our local community here on the shore for all of the breast cancer survival needs basically that one may need. For example, we provide free wigs, lift chairs. When you're newly diagnosed, we provide a bag with all sorts of information, not only for the person or the woman diagnosed or man diagnosed with breast cancer, but also the caregiver. So we are truly there or here to support those in our local community who are suffering from such a seemingly tragic illness, but sometimes there are a lot of happy endings, and so we're also grateful to be a part of that. So it is by your donations and your support, continued support, that we can continue our mission. So thank you all, and thank you to you guys as well.
Just by way of information, as we present the check, I'll ask Fire Fighter Colgrove, Acting Lieutenant Colgrove, to get the check ready. We were able to raise, really this year was a small year for us, one thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars, but we're grateful for every penny that we could raise. Part of the donation and part of the fundraising activity, you will see in the month of October that our on-duty uniform personnel will be wearing pink T-shirts, and I like them, so I think they look great. Probably not pink throughout the rest of the year, but in the month of October, it's certainly great. And also, many of our volunteer company members purchased them, and all of those proceeds went, have gone to Women Supporting Women. So we're so very grateful for that opportunity, and we thank our elected officials and our administration for supporting us in this activity. So without further ado, we'll present the check to the ladies from Women Supporting Women. Mayor, Mayor, Mr. Day, whoever else you want to.
Ladies, on behalf of the council, I would like to thank you for what you do. It's amazing when you start talking to people, and I myself have someone who is a cancer survivor, and it's amazing how many families have been touched by this horrible, horrible disease. And everything we can do to make the lives of those people and their caregivers is definitely a positive thing, so thank you again.
I too am a survivor.
Are you?
Yes, I am, so I thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda, please. Is that moved?
Second.
We have a move and a second to adopt the legislative agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is that moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Good evening. On the consent agenda, we have the January nineteenth work session minutes, the January twenty-fifth regular meeting minutes, February first special meeting minutes, and the February eighth regular meeting minutes. Resolution twenty-five ninety-one authorizing the city administrator and the director of internal services to act on behalf of the city in executing a contract for the supply of electricity. Resolution number twenty-five ninety-two approving the appointment of Teresa Cropper Cornish to the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals for the term ending February Resolution number twenty-five ninety-three approving the reappointment of Richard H. Parsons to the Marina Committee for the term ending February 2017. Resolution number twenty-five ninety-four approving the reappointment of Paul Graff Young III to the Marina Committee for the term ending February 2017. Resolution number twenty-five ninety-five approving the reappointment of Laurie S. Andrews to the Mayor's Council in support of people with disabilities for term ending December 2018. Resolution number twenty-five ninety-six approving the appointment of N. Eugene Malone Jr. to the Revolving Loan Bankers Review Committee for term ending February 2019. Resolution number twenty-five ninety-seven approving the reappointment of William Turner to the Revolving Loan Bankers Review Committee for the term ending February 2019. And resolution number twenty-five ninety-eight authorizing the mayor to enter into an MOU with the Life Crisis Center and Telamon Corporation for the purpose of applying for office of violence against women's FY16 transitional housing assistance grants for victims of sexual assault, domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. We already voted.
Yeah, we did.
We already voted. If the following individuals are here, would you please stand? Teresa Cropper Cornish, Richard A. Parsons, Paul Graff Young, Laurie S. Andrews, N. Eugene Malone Jr., and William Turner. Well, we thank those individuals for accepting the challenge and volunteering. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the Ward of Bits. Is that moved?
Second.
Third.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Miller.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The first item this evening is change order number three to RFP-07-12. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from Salisbury Public Works to process this change order in the amount of eighty-eight thousand seventy dollars for RFP-0712. That was the Cody Cox Branch Flood Relief and Drainage Improvements. This change order would provide for inspection services of the West Isabella Street Water Main replacement and would include a time extension of thirty days. Funds are available in the account that I noted in your packet. The Department of Internal Services Procurement Division requests council's approval to process this change order as noted above to A. Morton Thomason Associates in the amount of eighty-eight thousand and seventy dollars.
Okay.
Okay. The next item this evening is change order number seven to Contract A-07-14. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Department of Public Works to process change order number seven in the amount of eight thousand six hundred dollars for Contract A-07-14, street improvements, and that's the curb, gutter, and sidewalk construction. Additional funds have come available to provide for additional parking spaces for the new Salisbury Skate Park. Funds are available in the account that I noted in your packets. The Department of Internal Services Procurement Division requests council's approval to process this change order as noted above to Malone and Phillips in the amount of eight thousand six hundred dollars.
Questions? There being none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number two-five-nine-nine. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Stevenson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The capital improvement plan is a short-range capital planning document for fiscal years seventeen through twenty-one. The proposed multi-year plan provides for maintenance and improvements of publicly-owned infrastructure such as transportation, stormwater, parking, and water and sewer systems. It also outlines improvements and replacement for building needs and other major equipment. Detailed cost information and the recommended funding sources are identified for each project in the CIP. Projects were considered in order of importance and have the ability to fund them. Projects are paid for with general fund revenue, bonded debt, by way of lease purchase and with grant funding. The twenty-seventeen through twenty-twenty-one capital improvement anticipates expenditures of thirty-six million dollars in the general fund and twenty-one million dollars in the water and sewer fund. Some highlights for FY17 include investments in public safety such as three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for police vehicles, a one-point-five million dollar investment in police communications equipment, one-point-six million dollars in firefighting equipment. In Parks and Recreation, Mayor Day recommends one-point-five million dollars in community centers, over seven hundred thousand dollars for Phase Two of the skate park, a half million dollars of street reconstruction, and in Public Works, two-point-nine million dollars are budgeted for the Main Street master plan. Passage of resolution two-five-nine-nine resolves that the council adopts the plan, however adoption does not authorize the project nor does it fund it. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
I think we had a pretty good discussion last week over everything, and they answered questions that I had.
Mr. Arton. The only thing I would ask, just for the public's knowledge, is could you, Mr. Carter, could you give us the breakdown of, for next FY17, the bonded, the general fund source of revenue? Percentages or the actual amounts is fine?
The slide that we had that broke down the CIP by revenue source was for the total CIP.
Right.
So I may have that for seventeen, too. Let me just check something real quick here. You just want, I'll give it to you in total, and then I'll see if I have it for seventeen. Yeah. In total, for the general fund, the, second here, on a different slide. Tried to guess what you were going to ask. That's the mistake.
It was only about three hundred.
Yeah. General revenues, we've, this plan proposes that we use twenty-three percent for general revenues to fund CIP grants, twelve percent lease, nine percent, and bond funding fifty-six percent.
Great.
So that's the breakdown.
That's it.
You bet.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Keith.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevenson. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-three-seven-three for the second reading.
Is that moved?
Second.
Mr. Chalmers.
All right, this is the Burt Street abandonment that was previously read. The, An Ordinance of the City of Salisbury to Abandon an Area of Land Being Unimproved Road Bed at Burt Street Between Cypress Street and Lake Street. Whereas Burt Street formerly known as South Street, as shown on the plat, entitled "Plat of Survey of Land of FAB Company," dated April through May nineteen twenty-two and recorded among the land records of Wycomico County in plat number one-thirty-six forty-one, was never opened or paved by the City of Salisbury. And whereas the portions of Burt Street being abandoned are more particularly described and as parcels A, parcel B, parcel C, and parcel D, being a total of seventeen thousand five hundred fifteen point one square feet, plus or minus on exhibit A attached here, too. And exhibit A is that plat that's in this packet. Whereas the owner of the land adjoining parcel A of Burt Street is Delmarva Real Estate Holdings, Inc. Of parcel B is the City of Salisbury, of parcel C is Rodney V. and Brenda D. Dawson, and of parcel D is the City of Salisbury. And whereas the City Salisbury Department of Public Works has determined the aforementioned areas of land have never been used by the public, as unimproved, is unimproved and unpaid, and the city believes it is in the best interest of the city to abandon the aforementioned areas of land, indeed parcel A and parcel C, to the adjoining property owners as stated above. And whereas the City of Salisbury, chapter SC-eleven-two, gives the City of Salisbury charge of all public ways in the city, and whereas SC-sixteen-eight allows the city to abandon or otherwise dispose of property that is not saleable, and whereas the City of Salisbury Department of Public Works has prepared and the city solicitors reviewed the proposed quick claim deeds to release the unimproved street, copies of which are attached here, too, as exhibit B, and both of those deeds are back there. It looks like, at least in my packet anyway, there may be extra copies as well, but the ones that are there are there. Whereas the City of Salisbury Department of Public Works has prepared and the city solicitors reviewed the proposed quick claim deeds to release the unimproved street, copies of which are attached here, too, as exhibit B, and whereas the Director of Public Works provided the city council a recommendation of the proposed road abandonment on January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, at the city council work session. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury that the City of Salisbury hereby abandons the seventeen thousand five hundred fifteen point one square foot area of Burt Street, and that the mayor of the City of Salisbury is hereby authorized to execute the attached deeds contained in exhibit B to convey to the adjoining owners the city's right, title, and interest in the abandoned street. And then the first deed, it does appear under exhibit B, and now I noticed there's a second copy of exhibit A. That, I don't know how that got in the packet, but the second quick claim deed is right behind that, and those are the two deeds that would be signed.
Okay.
The remaining portion of the road bed, it actually adjoins the city's property, so the city doesn't need to deed that to the city.
Any questions? All those in favor of ordinance number two-three-seven-three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-three-seven-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY-two thousand sixteen Fire Department budget to transfer insurance funds received by the city to the Fire Department operating budget from the general fund for the revenue received for the repairs performed on Engine sixteen dash one. Whereas damage was done to Engine sixteen dash one while performing legitimate City of Salisbury Fire Department duties, and whereas the Fire Department has paid for the repairs to Engine sixteen one out of the FY-two thousand sixteen Fire Department operating budget, and whereas the city has received a total of seven thousand two hundred dollars and six cents from insurance proceeds for repairs to Engine sixteen dash one, and whereas the insurance proceeds are to be used to replenish the Fire Department budget accounts and to bring them back in line with planned FY-two thousand sixteen budget expense projections for the remainder of the fiscal year. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget be and is hereby approved, amended, and amended as follows. Increase the general fund revenue insurance proceeds account oh-one-zero-zero-zero dash four-five-six-nine-three-five by seven thousand two hundred dollars and six cents, and increase the Fire Department expense vehicles account two-four-zero-three-five dash five-three-four three oh six by an equivalent amount.
Mark, you said six, and on my paper it says eight.
What line are you on?
Twenty-six and a half.
Twenty-six? Okay, so are you referring to the account number?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, it does end in eight. You're correct. Sorry about that. Tried to go too fast.
Paying attention, please.
Good guy. Impressive.
You get the eagle eye. It's the ward of the night.
Pretty good this late in the day.
Any other questions?
Don't even say it.
All right, all those in favor of ordinance number two-three-seven-four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-three-seven-five.
Is that moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
This is a second ordinance with a similar purpose, an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY-two thousand sixteen Fire Department budget to transfer funds from the city to the Fire Department operating budget from the general fund. Whereas during the FY-two thousand sixteen budget process, the Fire Department budgeted an amount for, in the vehicles account, two-four-zero-three-five dash five-three-four-three-oh-eight, was reduced by twenty thousand dollars, and whereas the Fire Department has need to maintain its fleet by performing regular maintenance and repairs, and whereas the Fire Department has reviewed the expense records from the last five years, and whereas the average annual expense for vehicle repairs and maintenance has been one hundred and fifty thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-six cents, and whereas to keep vehicles in service, the Fire Department is projecting a shortfall of funds in the vehicle account two-four-o-three-five dash five-three-four-three-oh-eight for the remainder of FY-two thousand sixteen. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget be and is hereby amended as follows, with an increase in the general fund revenue account of fifty-one thousand dollars and an increase in the Fire Department expense vehicles account two-four-o-three-five dash five-three-four-three-oh-eight by an equivalent amount.
And I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two-three-seven-five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll now entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-three-seven-six.
Is that moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
It's an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY-two thousand sixteen budget to appropriate funds for traffic equipment repairs and maintenance, whereas as a result of a traffic accident, a City of Salisbury-owned traffic signal was damaged at East Main Street and North Division Street, and whereas the City of Salisbury Traffic Division Public Works Department made the necessary emergency repairs to the traffic signal, and whereas the insurance agency for the individual responsible for the accident is reimbursing the city for the actual expenses, and whereas the traffic division budget should be increased to accommodate these efforts. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of, yeah, by the city council, the City of Salisbury, that the city's fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget and traffic division equipment budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase in the miscellaneous revenue oh-one-zero-zero-zero dash four-five-six-nine-one-one account by three thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars and eight cents, and an increase in the traffic equipment account two-two-zero-zero-zero dash five-three-four-three-oh-two by three thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars and eight cents.
Okay, I'll now call for a vote on the ordinance number two-three-seven-six. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll now entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-three-seven-seven.
Is that moved? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Chalmers.
Okay, this is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment to the schedule of maximum towing and storage fees. Whereas chapter five-point-six-four towing companies has been adopted by the mayor and the city council, and whereas chapter five-point-six-four calls for the fees and charges for the police-directed tows and the related storage of towed vehicles to be established by ordinance from time to time, and whereas the city has determined that the tow fee should be, should not solely be influenced by the Motor Fuel Price Index as published by the U.S. Department of Labor as stated in ordinance number twenty-one-eighty-nine when said fees were last reestablished. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the schedule of maximum towing and storage fees be modified as follows. The fee for the accident vehicle tow is hereby amended from one hundred and sixty dollars to two hundred. The automatic annual adjustment is hereby deleted from the schedule of fees last amended by ordinance number two-one-eight-nine. And be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its passage.
All those in favor of ordinance number two-three-seven-seven, first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-three-seven-eight for the first reading.
Is that moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
This is the first of two ordinances that was the result of a recommendation of consultants to the city so that the city could be in compliance with the Fair Housing laws in the Americans with Disabilities Act, number two-three-seven-eight, an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to amend chapter fifteen-point-two-four-point-one-six-two-zero Determination of Functional Family of the Salisbury City Code to amend the requirements of functional family. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, enforcement of the Salisbury municipal code demonstrates a need for periodic review, evaluation, amendment. Whereas chapter fifteen-point-two-four-point-one-six-two-zero, entitled Determination of Functional Family of the City of Salisbury Code currently does not give consideration to disabled individuals, and whereas the Fair Housing Act directs that reasonable accommodations be made with regard to housing needs of individuals with disabilities, and whereas by correcting this subsection, the city will better align with the Federal Fair Housing Standards Act, the Americans with Disabilities Act, and Maryland state law. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury that section fifteen-point-two-four-point-one-six-two-zero of the City of Salisbury Code be amended as follows. Article forty-two-four, entitled fifteen-point-two-four-point-one-six-two-zero, Determination of Functional Family, paragraph one. There's a few capitalization corrections that are made in that first sentence, and then if you look under B, there's the addition of the language paren, not including any alimony or child support made to or for the benefit of any member of the group. And then the next change is under paragraph two, and that paragraph would read, "In the case of an application by persons who are disabled pursuant to the terms of the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance shall make a determination of whether a functional family exists under fifteen-point-two-four-point-one-six-two-zero, paren numeral one and paren, period. When making that determination, the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance shall make any necessary and reasonable accommodations, including the modification of conditions required by subsection one of this section, and the allowance of more than four unrelated individuals in the same household when necessary to comply with applicable federal and state laws regarding fair housings and, fair housing and persons with disabilities." And on the last page, the copy that you have still says two thousand fifteen, but should be amended to reflect the new year. And on the last page, the copy that you have still says two thousand fifteen, but should be amended to reflect the new year.
Okay, questions?
Make an amendment for that change.
I don't think you need to.
Is that a corral?
Yeah, I thought, I think just changing the, the date.
I think we've discussed this very well in depth.
Okay. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two-three-seven-eight for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-three-seven-nine for the first reading.
So moved.
Okay, this is an ordinance to the city of Salisbury to amend chapter seventeen point oh-four point one-two-zero zoning definitions of the Salisbury City Code to amend the requirements of functional family. And this actually, whereas the ongoing, this again, for the same reasons and based on the recommendation in the Fair Housing Act, we're going to deal with section seventeen point oh-four point one-two-zero definitions. Under the definition of family, family means and includes, subject to the exceptions below. And then what is amended there is C, we're adding in paragraph one, "A group of not more than four persons who are approved by the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance pursuant to section fifteen point two-four point sixteen-two-zero," again, paren numeral one, and paren, "as a functional family." And two, "A group of four or more disabled persons," paren is defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act, and paren comma, "who are approved by the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance pursuant to section fifteen point two-four point one-six-two-zero," paren numeral two, and paren. And basically, these two work in conjunction so that when looking at the definition of family under this, with this ordinance with the zoning law, you'll refer back to the other code that we just amended a second ago to enable to comply.
And you'll also need to address the year again.
Yes, and the same year issue exists in this copy, should be two thousand sixteen.
Right. Questions? Okay, I'll call the, I'll call the motion, please. All those in favor of ordinance number two-three-seven-nine, first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Mayor, do you have any words of wisdom?
Mr. President, no, I don't. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Do we have any public comments, Ms. Nichols?
No, we do not.
I think we might have somebody here that just didn't sign up.
Okay.
He can sign up after if he'd like.
Okay, fine.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the city council. My name's Rick Green. I'm a retired pastor who has moved back into the area, having left here in mid-two thousand, but had been living in the area back into the nineteen nineties. Several of our family live here, grandchildren live here, and we thoroughly enjoy this community and this area. What I would like to address is an issue of concern for many of us in the particular subdivisions where we live in the county that also have a significant impact on the city of Salisbury. So if you would permit me a moment to hand out this, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
This is simply a enhanced copy of the Paleo, Paleo Channel area. And this is our concern that we brought to you tonight. I'm engaged in a group of individuals who are concerned residents from, as I said, five subdivisions that are in the county. Of course, this is not a, a city issue, but when we deal with the Paleo Channel and the Aquifer, that becomes a, a city issue. In that, as you can see from this map, that is a significant source of fresh water to the city. And actually, it extends from Delmar through the entire section of the eastern shore as a significant water source. The issue at hand, and I'm sure you've read about it in the newspaper, that our neighbors and various members of our community, and actually throughout the city and the county, have gathered together and expressed our concern at the county level regarding the CAFOs, or these large industrial concentrated animal feeding operations that are starting to transition into the eastern shore area specifically. That could have a significant impact, the key word there is could, on this water resource. And if we lose it, if we lose this water resource, there will be no recovery. So I'd like to give you just a few items, and I appreciate you giving me a couple of moments to speak to it. We've been endeavoring for months to speak with at council sessions, i.e. work sessions, similar to what you do here at city council, to express our concerns and to work with them. This has been ongoing for several months. It's interesting to note that the Delmarva poultry industry has already had a work session with county council several months ago. And we continue to wait for that opportunity to do so. We have been addressing and asking for that public meeting, as I say, for some time. And most recently, we have been given some indication that a public meeting will be held supposedly at the civic center, which will not only involve all individuals at the local governmental level, i.e. the city, but also the county and also the state, to try and resolve inebly the issues at hand and the concerns for all citizens. And the reason we're bringing this to you, again, I cannot overemphasize the issue as it pertains to the fresh water for, supply for the city of Salisbury that the Paleo Channel represents. I will only give you a couple of items for you to consider, and that is one, that in nineteen ninety-seven, a RI sixty-five, which is a report of investigation, was ordered or requested by the city of Salisbury relative to groundwater and related issues. The company Andreessen, that's A-N-D-R-E-A-S-E-N, DC and Smith of Annapolis, were engaged to do that study for the city. In two thousand and thirteen, a further study was undertaken at the request of the city by Mark Eisner, that's E-I-S-N-E-R. He's the president of Advanced Land and Water, Inc., from Eldersburg, Maryland. That study has also been completed and provided some time ago. Here in two thousand and sixteen, the county executive has requested a further study to be completed by a local hydrogeologist. His name is Mr. John Hines, and that is still pending. Why do I bring this to council? Simply because if these large industrial operations are allowed to enter en masse into the county, the impact is, potential impact on the paleo and therefore the city's water source, that needs to be recognized. We thank the mayor for taking time today to give us a few moments of, from his busy schedule and, and an exchange of meaningful thought. Our approach is not, somebody loses and somebody wins. Our approach here is strictly a win-win. That's what we are looking for, i.e. a balance. And in that connection, we are requesting that the city consider expressing in form of a letter would be appropriate perhaps to county, county executives, president of the, of the county council, any concern that you may have with respect to what we've shared with you tonight. I'm sure, as I say, if you have been reading various publications in the community, you have seen a great deal of angst, there's a lot of concern. And people of the eastern shore, whether they're in our subdivisions or whether they're in Nutters Crossing, wherever they may be, are concerned that there is going to be a fallout here and recovery will not be possible. So thank you for your time, I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And I'm certainly, I'm certain that it will come before us in a work session, and we'll have a discussion, a discussion about it. Thank you for your input. Anything else? So go to the order. If not, this meeting is adjourned.
Hang on, can you show me what you were, can you show me what you were talking about? Was it exhibit two? The one that you said that.
I'm gonna ask.
No, no, I mean. What you were seeing, the attachments. Okay. Uh-uh. Thank you. Okay, you too. See ya.